You all set, Jim? Good evening, everybody. So the Newton Planning Board will hold a meeting tonight on September 27, 2022, starting at 3:00 past 7:00. First thing I'd like to do is salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight we have Mr. Piper in person, Mr. Guide, and Mr. Marshawn, and I believe we have Annie is on Zoom as well as Mark Lavoy, correct?
Looks like Bob was there, too.
And Ms. White.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. So I'd like to call the meeting to call for a public hearing 5:00 past 7:00. The first thing on our agenda tonight is a home-based business. Mr. Brandon Rogers of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for a non-retail home-based business, a mobile auto repair from 43 Marquess Road, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 1, Block 1, Lot 14. Ms. Rowden, can you provide some input?
Yep, I reviewed the application materials submitted. It seems to be a complete application. It does seem to conform with your requirements. Given that it is an automotive business, I understand it's intended, it's just for office work to be done in the home, and you can have the applicant speak to that. Just having the board verify that no servicing will be done onsite because that brings a whole other set of questions. And I have a couple of recommendations for conditions related to that, but we can get to that after the applicant has a chance to describe this business.
Okay. So in your opinion, the application has been completed?
Correct.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion to his jurisdiction?
I'll make a motion to take jurisdiction of the home-based business.
Second.
Mr. Guide and then Mr. Piper, seconded it.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Annie appears to be frozen. She's saying aye, but she says yes, I believe, but her aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Mr. Rogers? The floor is yours.
Just real quick, it's a startup business, and to scale correctly and not go out of business, you've got to build a clientele base, and to do that, the most inexpensive would be a mobile business without a shop right at this point in this area. And I've had a hard time finding an actual location in Plastow, King, this whole area. There's really no available shops at this point, so I have no choice but to be mobile. So that's, I don't plan on having retail at the house. I live right next to the pond. I understand that it would be impossible to do that. But that's it, just strictly mobile, using my home as an office. I would use it to train myself online. I'd be the only employee until I'm able to find a place. And I think I'd bring a lot to this community because I have a lot of experience and very honest. And my background being in Southern California, I've seen a lot and done a lot through General, with General Motors, and I would bring a lot to the area with honesty in repair. That's really all I got right now. And I need a shop.
I've just got sort of a couple of operational questions, if that's okay?
Sure.
So the intention is to have the office out of your house, but if you're going to be servicing cars from your house, like where will tools be stored? How are you going to deal with any fluids or hazardous material you may be dealing with?
Well, to be honest, there would be no fluids except for changing oil on my car, you know, my wife's car and stuff like that. And then I'd expose, you know, of that correctly. My tools, I have a garage that I store my tools in that I rent.
So just so, your tools are not stored at your home where the home-based business is?
Right, so it's a separate location, yeah.
Okay.
Most of my tools have been in the vehicle that I use.
Okay.
And it's been working out pretty good. But, yeah, that's it.
So we're wondering about maybe your vehicles that you're going to use to be able to do a mobile repair. So a van, pickup truck, would you have a small trailer so that you could put your tools in? I think that was part of the things that we were looking to hear from you.
Yeah, so I have a vehicle, right now I'm utilizing a Tahoe. Once again, keep the cost low.
Yeah.
It's my own personal, I've converted it into a work truck, so I use that. I wouldn't have a trailer, just one vehicle for the property. And then any other tools that I would have is at a different location, yeah.
Okay.
Are all the chemicals that come with repairing vehicles stored at the other location, too?
I noticed you said paying customers. You don't intend on using bartering in your driveway, like bartering services?
No, I don't intend on, what I meant by that was if I was going to work on my personal vehicles, that I can work on my personal vehicles at my house, which wouldn't be excessive at all. But I just didn't want to have my hood popped, you know, doing a repair and then getting in trouble for that, so that's why I put that on there.
Just, this might help with some of this. A suggested condition of approval I had for this is that no servicing, repair, storing, or sales of vehicles at the premises except for personal vehicles, just as a suggested condition. And it would still allow for, you know, you doing your own oil change, but not, you know, the guy down the street who's paying you for that service, so.
And you're aware that you can put a sign out in front of your property as long as you can pull it up and remove it, like at the end of the night? What's, I'm sorry, what size is that? Is it?
Two square feet.
Two square feet.
Yeah, two square feet that you could, if you wanted to, with your phone number to publicize it, just so that you're aware of that.
Okay. Thank you. So I don't plan on being there that long, just to let you know, but I just wanted to be on the up and up while I am operating out of there. So as soon as something pops up, I'm gone. It's been going over well in the community, you know? People seem to like me.
Any more questions from the board?
Annie's got one.
Oops, sorry, Annie, I missed you. We still can't hear you.
Annie, you're muted. We can't hear what you're saying.
Unplug your mic and plug it back in. I was just going to say, it's not showing as being muted here on Zoom.
Okay, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Ah, okay, thank you. I was questioning, I didn't understand an answer for disposal of tires or oil. What is the plan for that?
There will be no tires. I don't have the means to do tires. And oil, the only oil that I would have to dispose of would be my own. Anything else would be disposed of before I got home because of the mobile service. There's no oil storage at the facility. Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
I just wanted to know what you're going to do with the oil.
You take it to the local auto parts store, like Autozone, Napa, and they recycle it there.
Okay.
Actually, in this area, you can sell it, too, for heating. But I'm not going to, probably not going to do that, it's too much.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, do you have anything? No? Okay.
No, I'm good.
Nothing from you. Yeah, thank you, guys.
So at this point, I'll open up to the public, just notes, especially for tonight. We have a pretty filled agenda, there's a lot of people here. If you have any comments, can you please try to keep them concise? And I don't want it necessarily short, but to the point of the item on the agenda, so, and keep them relative and relevant. So I'm not sure if anybody in the audience has any comments or online. If you're online or in the audience, please announce yourself so Mr. Doggett knows who you are, so he can grab it from the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept and grant Brandon Rogers of Newton, New Hampshire's request for a home-based business, mobile auto repair from his home at 43 Marcus Road, Newton, New Hampshire.
With gen stipulation.
With conditions stated.
So I did have one other suggested condition, if you want me to read it to you, and if you agree with it, you can take it, if not, you don't have to. So there was the one about the no servicing and repair except for personal vehicles, but no storage of hazardous or toxic materials as defined by zoning ordinance, and it's 28.2, that's your hazardous substances for over your aquifer district, but it just is a concise definition, that's why I'm using that with, so. No storage of hazardous or toxic materials as defined by zoning ordinance 28.2 associated with the home-based business. So the oil would count if it wasn't of personal use, if it was antifreeze fluid, that kind of stuff would not be allowed to be stored if it's associated with the business. If it's personal, that's different, so.
That's fine. Can I say something?
Mr. Chair, may I make a correction? It's actually 34 Marquess, not 43.
It's 34.
As stated.
Second. Thank you, Ms. White. Sorry, Jim, yes.
Oh, I was just going to say, I have, I broke it down to three separate conditions. One is all mechanical work will be done offsite except working on the property owner's personal vehicles. No outdoor storage of business-related materials and no storage of hazardous materials per zoning ordinance 28 dot 2 associated with the business.
Perfect.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded, Jim. Mr. Guide?
Thank you.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with your business.
So, agenda item one or A is now closed out. The second item on our agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 developed in New Hampshire corporate, Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for four-building condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27.3. So just to clarify for everybody, unless we receive a request for us to make a decision tonight, or a request to continue, we have to make a decision, I believe, is that a correct statement?
Correct. The applicant would have to agree to a continuance, or else the board has to make a decision tonight.
So Ms. Rowden, do you have any input?
So at this point, you've accepted jurisdiction. There are a number of waivers you have not dealt with. Some of them are still applicable and some of them are not because of the fairly major revisions done to this application. I would actually recommend that you let Barry go through the changes that have been made, because there are quite a few changes.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Once again, my name is Barry Guyer, I'm with Jones Beach Engineers here for the applicant. This is 143.7 acre parcel in the light industrial commercial zone. Since our last meeting, if you didn't know, the ZBA denied the requested variances that were for this project. So we have gone back to the drawing board with the applicant in order to make the project more compliant with zoning. The major in changes including the relocation of Industrial Way, reduction in building sizes, and the reduction in buffer impacts. Now, the relocation of Industrial Way, even though we don't agree with the interpretation, the ZBA ruled that the road cannot be located within the 200-foot structural setback, strict enforcement of which would make the property inaccessible from Route 108. So even though that we still need variances to access the property, we have shifted the proposed Industrial Way to be located outside the 200-foot structural setback to the extent possible. This is shown, it's kind of shown here on C2 where we should follow, we used to follow more closely along the 50-foot vegetative buffer. We can't hear you online. It's the difficult part of this. We've shifted it up past the 200-foot structural setback where we could, where it was previously down by the 50-foot setback, the vegetative buffer. The building sizes have also been reduced. As originally submitted, we had a total building size of 207,000 square feet. The revised building size or 192, total is 192,750 square feet. Building number one, there's no change, it's still at 15,750 square feet, 15,750 square feet. Building number two was reduced from 86,250 square feet to 75,000 square feet, and I apologize on sheets, on the two sheets, that still shows up as 86,250, but it's actually 75,000.
In the footprint that's there, that this one, so it's just the number that's wrong?
Correct.
Okay.
Building number three, there's no change, it's still 67,500 square feet, and building number four was reduced from 37,500 to 34,500, 34,500 square feet. The reduction in building size allowed us to remove all the buffer impacts associated with the buildings, grading for the buildings, and drainage associated with the buildings. Buffer impacts went from 102,101 square feet to 53,092 square feet, so we almost have the buffer impacts. The proposed impacts that are remaining are associated with the proposed roadways and the stormwater treatment areas associated with the roadway runoff. So we have to be adjacent to the wetlands and the buffers to actually access Form 108, and there's section of the puzzle lane extension of the cul-de-sac that we actually have to cross very close to the wetlands, create a wetland impact, and we have buffer impacts along that. The last major change is the intersection of Industrial Way and Route 108. So the traffic study has been completed and it has been submitted, the town has it as well as DOT. We have included the proposed improvements recommended in the traffic study in our revised plan set. They're shown on HA1. The biggest one is that Route 108 will be widened to include, excuse me, a left turn lane into the site, and that Industrial Way will be three lanes exiting with dedicated right and left turn lanes out. The traffic study is at DOT for review. It hasn't been approved yet, they're still looking at it, so as soon as we hear back and get feedback from DOT, we'll let the board know. Stormwater is still being collected and directed to one of five infiltration basins throughout the site. There is one proposed gravel wetland at the end of the proposed puzzle lane. We have received comments from the town engineer. We know we have a few items on his list ironed out. We also received comments from Ms. Rowden, and we'll need to address those. I don't see any problem with addressing those, but we do need to address them. We, as I indicated before, we do have to make another application to the ZBA because there are some buffer impacts and some impacts into that structural setback that we still have to have ZBA variances for. So we still have state permits to obtain, which we're kind of waiting until we get the ZBA approval to move forward with those, because it doesn't make sense to move forward until we have that approvals. So therefore, we are proposing to answer any questions the board has tonight and to ask for a continuance until we have input from the ZBA on the revised plans and input from DOT on the proposed intersection. So with that, we take any questions the board has.
I have one question. There's a lot of construction material that's located on that site right now. Is that going to be planned to be used on the site for part of the roadway? Because you, we talked about it before, that road needing to be built up, and if not, where is that going to go?
So I would further comment, can the existing condition plans reflect what's out there today?
Can, you want to see the piles? The piles move.
I'm aware the piles move. I would like them to reflect what's out there as of when the application goes in front, generally. I understand piles generally move, but there's not, Jim, can you pull up that aerial photo? There's not one pile, one piece of equipment shown on these drawings.
Sorry, somebody was coming into the room.
So it makes the, we have a really hard time looking at the drawings to make a decision if the existing conditions don't reflect the limit of work, and that's a, or reflects what's out there today as well as the proposed conditions are on areas of the site that are not surveyed.
Okay. Yeah, I got to look into that and see if we can take care of that.
Specifically, basin number three, so I'm not sure how that was designed.
You can tell me which one?
You want to just zoom out? I'm not sure if you can on there, but.
Jim, it looks like there's a zooming in and out on the bottom right.
Sorry, this is not my normal program.
I'm going to drive for you, Jim.
I can scroll up and down if what you like.
So what we have in front of us tonight doesn't reflect generally what's out there.
All right, we'll see about updating that and get back to you on that.
Continue, sorry.
To answer Mr. Marshawn's question, yes, most of the equipment out there, he has purchased equipment to construct the roads in the site in general. But I know they operate, you know, otherwise as well.
Right, because they've been breaking concrete and whatever, so I'm wondering where that's going to go, if that was supposed to be part of the road.
Yep, a lot of that will be used as part of the road base.
We had, I did receive permits, but they were dated all the way back to 2009, and believe, of the belief that they've expired.
Mr. Chairman, could I answer that?
Is that, sorry, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tom Lackford. We're almost finished with the new permits. We do have selective approval for time of operation and frequency of the property. As we're constructing, we still hold open permits. In 2013, this was all put in place, a dissection, and we continued to decide the work for creating materials for the project was going to happen in this location, rather up on 27.4. And it just made sense at the time to do this, because eventually, as you know, what you see here, when you're looking at this Google Earth, it's basically inside all the buildings that we're proposing. And it is moving target. Obviously, these piles, we've been using crushed concrete consistently underneath our building slabs, some of the roadways, but definitely underneath the building slabs. And it comes and goes, depends on like what we have going on. And as you know, we just finished 27.4, and it's been thousands and thousands of yards over there. And so what's sitting there today will be used at the entry. We have a lot of fill needed to be done, and retaining walls that's coming into the entry and in the road design. So hopefully that answers it, what's there.
Yeah, because part of my concern was whatever isn't used, permits, from my understanding, are site for the certain site areas, and if any of that was to be moved, then new permits would have to get pulled in order to create a new site somewhere else on that property.
No, we only have to notify the state when we move. That's, and you know, obviously, we, you know, we sit down and talk with everybody else what we're doing, but you know, this is, we're trying to finish this project out, there will be nothing left behind. We're short material at this point, we're still trying to, you know, trying to make as we need it. And I would say we will probably, you know, process quite a bit more material to complete the project. We've got 5,600 feet of roadway to do, and there's a lot of areas where the road needs to come up.
Ms. Rowden, can you provide?
Sure. So with the application that is before you, you can certainly ask that the existing conditions reflect the existing conditions, that you absolutely have the right to do. As of, the other activity that may be going on on the site, I don't know the legal status of it one way or the other, it predates my involvement with Newton. That is outside of this board's purview right now. Understanding what's going on in the site as far as the existing conditions, absolutely. But the other items are a separate matter, so I would recommend you sort of cease with that part of the conversation.
So we have some additional comments from both our second writer, Ms. Rowden, as well as the town's engineer of various levels of completeness of this set of drawings. I also recommend that the applicant takes a look at their drainage design. There are some areas of concerns that specifically with each basin, that the swales may or may not be graded correctly, that they're not graded into the existing conditions. Maybe the existing conditions are incorrectly shown on the drawings, but in my opinion, they should be reviewed again for completeness and constructability. That's an overall statement throughout the drawing set. Ms. White, do you have any comments, or Mr. Lavoy, or Ms. Collier?
Yeah, this
Yeah, this, this is Barbara. I wanted to ask a question about the guardrails since they've said that there's supply chain issues and it's 40 weeks out. That's 10 months. So I'm thinking that in a couple of these areas, there's a real need to have those guardrails and how they, how are they expecting to take care of that if they can't get real guardrails?
I think that's for the other application that we're going to be looking at after this, for the other building.
No, because this, they need a guardrails here too. There's a couple of different places where guardrails are supposed to come, like on some of the curves and stuff. It's on the plans.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Absolutely.
Yes, Ms. White is correct. We, we have them on order already. They're already in the pipeline for us to get them. As, as Mr. Marchand already said, for the second part of this hearing tonight too, everything's on order. We are, have slots and we're just waiting to receive.
Thank you.
I guess the, the, part of the answer is, you know, they have to do the best, we have to do the best we can as the applicant and the contractors building it to, if we have to ask for a substitute, we'll talk with the town engineer to determine what a substitute would be.
Well, be, part of the reason why I was talking about what I was talking about, what's there and what's on site, is because according to the plans here, there's a tree line that's supposed to be formed across here.
What sheet are you on?
Up on the other end of the cul-de-sac that the people are here about. And that's going to need a lot of trees and shrubbery put in there. That's why I was asking about what's, what's happening with all of that.
Were you specifically referring to?
Right now, it's all wide open.
At the end of the Puzzle Lane cul-de-sac?
No, at the end of Howard Lane. So right now, it's all bare. So right up here, you see you got your tree line coming all the way up and around. So there's going to be a lot of plant life that's going to have to be put in there.
We are going to review our existing conditions, but we also, if you look on the landscape plan, we do propose to add trees along that line. So they're already shown. Obviously, we have to augment whatever tree line there is out there, if there is any.
Just because of timing and recommendations, they have not provided all of the septic system detail, which has direct impact on whether a hydrogeologic study is even required by regulations. You can require it anyway, regardless of the amount of septic capacity. Because of timing, that does take a little while. If that is something that the board feels is worthwhile information, and I would highly recommend requiring one regardless of the septic detail, that would be very useful information, I suspect, for the applicant to know at this point.
I think we're going to be over, so we're going to go ahead and, we were waiting to determine exactly where we would be able to potentially locate them because we originally had them located within, or some of them located within the 200-foot structural setback. Now we've relocated them outside of it. We have to complete the design, but we will be over the 2,500, I think it is, gallon requirement. So we will be moving, obviously, towards getting that completed.
This is Annie, I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. Mine's a procedural question. I understand that Mr. Lackford said that ZBA has turned down your applications. What I'm wondering is what the process is to go back before ZBA? Do you need a denial from us? Does existing denial work? You know, what's the status of, of the process?
Sure, I can respond to that if you'd like. The, the ZBA has granted the applicant a rehearing. We are preparing for the rehearing right now and hope to be on before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rowden.
So as far, Annie and everyone, as far as the planning board's process though, you need to continue on. Any condition of approval would be that they get any necessary variances. And at whatever point, if they are successful in getting all of the variances, then they move forward with planning board approval if we get to that point. If they're denied any of the variances, then they have to come back to the planning board because their site will change if the septic system or the stormwater drainage needs to move. It wouldn't be in conformance with what you have before you. So you just continue on with the regular planning board process and the ZBA has to deal with their own. It's good to be aware of it, but they are separate processes at this point. Everybody has to say yes in the end for it to happen.
Or we could say, well, actually, I'm going to rescind my comment.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Mark.
Where are, where are we in terms of communicating with Plastow about this? Are, do they, do they, are they notified after we decide tonight? Or have they already been in the loop before this, on this particular ask?
So, if I may, so we are, we have been in contact with Plastow. We haven't submitted officially to Plastow for their review and approval. Just because we had so many issues still to work out in Newton, specifically the ZBA issues, now that those have been resolved, and I think we're moving forward with both boards in Newton, we will be applying to Plastow for their approval, or at least their review.
And then that will be adjusted like it says it's supposed to be in the plans, off of some of the sheets and where it's supposed to be correctly placed, their approval?
Yes, and I, we still have to make sure that their approval is required because we're not asking to do anything in Plastow. I think it's more technical than approval-based. Does that make sense? Because we're not actually.
So if Plastow could, as their planning board, make the decision that they do not need any approval, that no approval from the town of Plastow is necessary. If Newton receives that correspondence from the Plastow planning board, that satisfies the state requirements. If that's received before anything gets recorded, then Plastow's signature block doesn't have to be on the plan set. We just need to have the date of the correspondence from Plastow, if that's how they choose to handle it. If they choose to take it as a full application, their signature block needs to be on the MYLR. They also have to have a statement that's currently a note in the plans that actually needs to be removed because it's incorrect. So it can be dealt with a couple of ways, but Plastow has to be aware of the application and make a determination to either see it as an application or that they have no comments.
Thank you.
When was the existing condition survey done on this? Just out of curiosity.
I couldn't tell you off the top.
Do you know if it was two years ago, 10 years ago?
It was, it was before my involvement.
Okay.
In the project, and my company didn't do the actual existing condition survey.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I answer that?
Yep.
It was done 21 months ago.
February of 2020.
Yeah, I believe it's right.
That's what the certification note at least says.
It's over two years.
February of 2020.
Okay, I was close. Conditions really haven't changed. I mean, the piles are like Mr. Guy was saying, obviously, the piles are moving target. You know, we're in process on 27-4 to finish up everything there, so we have been using quite a bit of material over there. And like I said, we're going to stockpile to get the entry road in too, so just in case we get lucky, we get the, we get some ZBA positive votes. But as far as, I mean, Barry, if we need to do existing conditions again, I guess we'll have to do them, but Barry will do them.
I'm just looking at, I know I can't share this with everybody right now. I'm looking at two aerials from March of 2020, March 21st of 2020 to December 20, sorry, April 21st, 2022, just at the changes.
Okay, so that would be in the east street corner of the piece you're looking at, where all the crushed concrete piles are? Is that where you're looking? It's sort, it's sort of widened out in there, the gravel? Because that would be the only place that changed there, and then the, in the north, south westerly corner, I guess up the other end, there's some changes there too. That would be it from the original, but that was done by Love Alley.
Dennis.
But it's, it's basically, we're pushing piles is what we're doing to store.
I don't think, you know, whether it's February 2020 or, you know, a few months ago, asking for the existing conditions, there, there is clearance that has happened out there. It's been there, I think, for a number of years, showing that on the plan and understanding, yes, the piles have shifted in the areas.
That would be, just a demarcation of stockpile area would be helpful. I don't, we don't need to know the volumes of material, just generally, you know, equipment storage or some, something. Right now, it looks like it's a cleared, flat area that doesn't have any activities going on. And there's, my understanding is there's activity, some activity out there.
Well, that would be correct, Mr. Chairman. There is activity there. There's activity every day and as we need to process what we're doing. It's been like this for quite some time, and we have been there since probably 2010-ish, I believe, is when we started kind, instead of having the, initially, we did it up on 27-7 and 27, the beginning of 27-4 and the, and the interim of that. But then Sergeant Woods started filling in. You know, we kind of worked with everybody there to sort of like go to a different direction with it.
I guess I don't really care what was happening before then. It's just that the plans in front of the planning board don't show what.
What it looks like now.
What it looks like now.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, Mr. Guy will take care of it.
I appreciate that, thank you. So, and I totally understand that piles move, but some, you know, stockpile area and just a line of, and then you could put a date of September 28th, 2022, or whenever that, that is. That way, we have some idea. So there's a baseline of what we're looking at, with the understanding that piles frequently change and move around.
Just process-wise, you guys have accepted jurisdiction of this. There are still a few waivers to deal with. I don't know if you're prepared to deal with them tonight. I think honestly, no, would be my recommendation. But you have taken jurisdiction. If you wanted to do a site walk, you could do it before it, honestly, it gets too cold because you can still see the trees filled in. That might be something in the interim that might be a useful activity to help move the application forward while you're waiting for more information. I'm saying this with the presumption the applicant is going to ask for a continuance or be amenable to a continuance, but I might be incorrect, so that should be verified.
No, you are correct. We would ask for a continuance so we can, like I said, we still have some issues to work out with the ZBA as well as DOT.
And you can do a site walk later, it's just a recommendation.
So Jim, what do we have so far? You said that you were going to be having the, the state for the entrance for the driveway. You're still waiting on that?
We have completed the traffic study. It has been submitted to DOT. DOT is, their lead time is a long lead time right now. So they're looking at it. When we get more input from them, we will come back and let you know. We did depict all the improvements that are suggested or recommended in the traffic study on the plans that are in front of you. And that's basically the left turn lane in. Off of Route 108.
Well, I'm just trying to put together the extra information that when you do come back to see us, what it is that we would like to have in front of us.
Besides the existing conditions, we do have the comment letter from Mrs. Rowden and the comment letter from the town engineer that we will be addressing to the extent practical, before we get the ZBA and DOT input.
So I can kind of run through that list. I'll, I'll try to get as many as I can, but it's a hydrogeologic study, it's septic design detail, it's some questions about the road design, and some questions about the stormwater. There's a little bit of more detail in there for just some design aspects from the engineering component, but those are the really big ones.
So I'll make a motion to grant the continuance upon?
Well, the applicant has to formally request the continuance.
He already did at the very beginning of his statement. He said, we're here to ask for a continuance. So I'm making a motion that we grant the continuance and that that information come back to us the next time after you are done with the zoning board.
Do you have a date that you're proposing for the continuance?
Yeah, we need time in.
The continuance needs to be date-specific. You need to specify what date you're continuing to.
Well, we don't know with the zoning board, so we can put it on for the next agenda and then end up doing another continuance.
You still have to give a specific date. Is it going to be two weeks from now? Is it going to be four weeks from now?
All right, we'll do two weeks from now at the next meeting.
If I may, I would suggest go to a month because we're probably not going to, we are not going to have all the answers in two weeks.
That would be the 25th of October.
Sounds good.
I'll second that.
Just before you vote, you do have a lot of people here. I didn't know if you wanted to hear from them at this point. You don't have to, but.
Well, even when we vote on this, we're still talking, right? We haven't moved on from this part of the public hearing. We're just going to grant him a continuance because there's some things that I want to make motions for still, right?
So it's just a continuance of the application. All you have done with this application is accept jurisdiction. You haven't dealt with waivers, you haven't made any final decisions on anything, but you have accepted jurisdiction.
So why don't we open it to a public hearing or, or open it to public comment before we vote on it? I think that's sensible.
Do you want to table it? That's fine by me. Table the vote until, we can table the vote until the public comment, given the amount of people in the room, and we have a few people online. I would ask that you come to the podium once and not repeat, just to try to limit the amount of people coming up. Sorry, Jim.
Remember, I need names and addresses, including those that have spoken on Zoom.
Did everybody here?
Who I don't have an address for.
Okay, names, addresses as well, as well as if you're on Zoom. And the floor is open, if anybody would like to come up.
And please just make sure to speak into the mic so us online can hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm Rayanne Fryett for Evergreen Drive, Newton, New Hampshire. Put it down. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I've read the site plan, and I have been, I was in the planning board for five years, so I'm familiar. I couldn't see anywhere how many units are, apartment units are going to be in each building, or how.
So there's no apartments? I, that's, I probably should have clarified that. It says a condominium. I, however.
Okay, how many condominium units are there going to be?
I will leave that up to the applicant, but it's not a, it's not a residential condominium, just.
These aren't going to be housing?
No.
Because we, I had heard they were all going to be for housing.
No.
These three-story buildings.
So that is not what, my understanding that's in front of us right now is this is for, and Barry, please feel free to clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, this is not a residential project. This is just industrial, commercial, light commercial, that, or light industrial and commercial, that is there.
So there's no, the three-story buildings, no apartments?
There are no apartments. These are not three-story buildings. They're, they're big steel buildings that you see that are on the other side of Puzzle Lane.
Oh, okay, so is this different from another plan with buildings?
There is, there is a residential, in front of the ZBA, we had a residential component that was, but this is not it.
Okay, so that's coming later?
Potentially.
Not tonight. Not later tonight. Okay, no, no, no.
I'm sorry, I read the plans, I read the plans, it said residential.
Absolutely. No, this is just industrial and commercial.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jen, do you want to do responses at the end, final? Yeah, that's probably easier.
That may have answered a lot of questions, though.
Sorry for the, usually I have recapped this, but this is for mixed-use industrial, commercial buildings, and there's five buildings, five buildings? Four buildings now. About a hundred and.
We have a raised hand, oh, I'm sorry. We have a raised hand on Zoom from Tom A.
Hold on one minute, Tom.
Nancy Kozlowski, Three Woodland Road, Newton, New Hampshire. So Rayanne brought up a question. There's four buildings in this parcel, Block 1. Do, does the applicant intend to break those up into smaller units like they did on 27-4, Puzzle Lane? It was going to be one building and now it's turned into several condominiums in the one building. Are we planning to do that in each of the four in this project?
Tom, if you would like to speak now, that would be fine.
Mr. Alberti? No, it's, it's, if, I don't know if you're asking me, Dennis?
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
I can answer her question if you want. We're, we're not splitting them up.
Mr. Alberti has his hand up.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, good evening. My name's Tom Alberti. I am in Abutter at Two Ridgewood Road in Plastow. Just had a couple of questions. I know that this parcel of land is over a large aquifer and there was mention about using, utilizing crushed concrete. So just want to make sure the board considers what that material is, if it has been tested and essentially been cleared as environmentally approved for use in this project. So, you know, where did the initial concrete come from? How is it utilized, crushed? And then when it goes back into the ground used for the project that it's considered? What's, you know, is this hazardous in any capacity? Again, because it's over the aquifer. So that's one point. I just asked the board consider that. And then number two, a little bit further along from the cul-de-sac, there has been some construction and I wouldn't say construction, actually, there's been some, some activity involved with what may be future basins. And my only concern is that there is no approved site plan for, for that area. So I want the board to understand that there has been activity without an approved site plan and I want you to, you know, just give that information so you can consider the discussion with the applicant so they understand that they're taking actions without an approved site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience?
Good evening. Dan Sweeney, Howard Lane. I just want to kind of verify the plan. I haven't even kind of really seen that. Just want to make sure that 200-foot setback is around my house.
You're at the end of Howard?
Yeah, on the public.
So Dennis, I can generally answer. So the way this is proposed, the majority of it is outside of the 200-foot setback. The roadway in does infringe upon that, which is why they are going to the ZBA.
Do you want a smaller scale, Mr. Sweeney? You can take it back with you.
Yeah, so he looks like he's in the 200. He's out, right?
Outside of the 200.
Yeah, outside the 200, yeah. Okay, that's all. I appreciate the effort.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, and Mr. Doug, it has up visually on the screen. Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Sure.
All our concrete coming in, we're received, has a clean letter and we, we supply those in as we get them. And it has to be approved before we even look at it. And we can supply some clean letters to, to the board if they would like.
I think this would be great if you can, if you can submit those to us.
And.
Yes.
Are those currently being regulated through New Hampshire DES or the building department?
That's correct. No, to DES, that's, yes, correct.
Okay.
Can you pull that thing up again?
Which?
Yeah, that, but the page that we were reading.
On the hydro geo report?
No, the site conditions.
Oh.
It goes page two. There it is. So Barry. What is this titled?
It's your HydroCAD, your drainage analysis report.
So that's dated 9-1 and it says that the study area consists of property, blah, blah, blah. The existing site is currently undeveloped and mostly covered in tall grass and shrubs. It's really not accurate.
We went through, and I can show you, we went through, if you look at the actual HydroCAD model, the areas that are gravel, we assumed, we used gravel as the land surface. So even though our, our description may not be exactly in the wording, the actual calculations are correct.
Did you just state that you used gravel for the pre-development for the?
Portions of the area, yeah.
Which areas?
The portions that show up as gravel roads on here.
Okay, so not the entire gravel pad?
I'd have to look at it again. I mean, it's been a little while since I've looked at the drainage report, but we can review that and review that with Mr. Vignali as well.
Okay.
I will say, in the, so that's the existing condition. So the more I assume is gravel in the existing addition, the less detention, storage that I have to do in the proposed condition. So if I assume it's all trees and grass, that actually ends up being a better situation for the town because then I have to put in larger detention basins, larger treatment areas.
Which I think the applicant may have to assume that it was not gravelled.
What we may, we look at the existing additions. So, and we, this is also an AOT project, so if AOT looks at it, I mean, they're very particular about what the existing conditions are as far as trees, grass, gravel, whatever.
I guess what I'm saying is that if that area is disturbed more than 100,000 square feet right now, that's gravelled, it would have required an alteration of terrain permit.
Well, yes, they do need an AOT permit for this project, no matter what. If something required an AOT permit and it didn't get it, if that's what the suggestion is, alteration of terrain will pick that up as well when they apply.
That's kind of, that was more eloquently worded than I worded it myself. But that's basically what I'm saying is that the post-condition, or sorry, the pre-conditions don't model or accurately reflect what was there a couple of years ago, then that's probably what it should model, although I will not make the decision for our friends over at AOT.
Unless you have any questions, I'll step down unless there's any other of the public that would like to talk.
And you do still have that motion on the table?
And it was to continue to October 27th?
25th.
25th, thank you. Mr. Marshon, put it to the table. Mr. Guide seconded it.
Yep.
I mean, if anybody wants to go a different way.
They, they know everything, what we're looking for at this point and then they're before the zoning board, so it's got to come back before the decision's made regardless. No decisions being made tonight, so at least now all the rest of that information needs to be corrected and brought forth.
I am of the belief that several continuances have already been granted.
When was this, when did we originally take the direction for this?
June.
June, okay.
You are well past the 65-day. The applicant has agreed to a continuance. That timeline is really for the applicant's protection.
Yeah, I think we went over this the last time he asked for a continuance. It's up to him.
But as long as they ask for the continuance.
You can, so you can make a decision tonight if you wanted to. I would recommend that you grant the continuance since there has been productive conversation about the expectations this evening, but you have the legal authority to make a decision tonight if you chose to.
And if we have a roll call and we deny the continuance, then by default?
Then the motion fails. You need to have a further discussion until the motion can pass, whatever the motion is.
Let's do it.
Jim, roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Villalvoi?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Nay.
That's unanimous.
It is not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jen, do you recommend us requiring a hydrogeologic study?
Yes, but per your regulations and Barry's comment that they are going to go above the threshold that requires it for your regulations.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary for you to do it in an alternate fashion, so.
Okay. And we could always, not that I want to continue again, however, request that at a later time once the location of the septic systems are nailed down.
Once the capacity of the septic systems is provided, that's the information that we need. If, if it's below that threshold, you could still require a hydrogeologic study.
Well, I guess that's why I'm trying to avoid him coming back and it's under and he didn't get one and then we want one.
I think based on the conversation this evening, it's pretty clear that you agreed with my recommendation that you'll be seeking a hydrogeologic study, but.
Yeah, if I may, the request for the septic, the waivers for the septic system and the hydro report were so that the project could be considered complete at the time that we submitted it and we could move on from that because we knew we had issues with, potential issues with the location of the septic systems. So we couldn't do the hydrogeological study until we were certain about it. We understood even, I think it even included in our, my initial presentation, we indicated that we would be doing those in the future. It was just that we could be complete as far as checking off the box so that we could continue our conversation with the board.
Okay. I just didn't want to see a wasted trip.
All right, well, we appreciate that.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we move on to the next thing, you're going to be shot one per minute before we move to the next item, if you would.
Do you want to just have a recess? Would that be?
Let's just do a, just do a recess. Mr. Chairman, you're, you're recessing the public hearing at?
Eight, 8:08? 8:06?
Five minutes.
By the way, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if they tell me which page they, they want, I can put them up on the screen. There's three pages for the next one. They're not all in, they're not in one file. So. So if you need me to switch from page to page, I will. Looking to see if the town administrator is.
Good what?
Looking to see if the town administrator is. Like he escaped.
He went to the bathroom.
This is the next one here.
Okay. Excuse me.
Where's your gavel?
Have a good night, gentlemen. Yep. Okay, third on the agenda tonight is 125 New Hamp, or 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire, requests a public hearing for an amended site plan at 3, 5, 7, and 9 Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lots 27-4. Ms. Rowden?
So the application itself does appear complete, but based on the site visit from the town engineer and his reports, there's some discrepancies. I would recommend the planning board not take jurisdiction, at least not yet this evening, until we get some clarification on some of the discrepancies because with an amended site plan is a site plan. You want existing conditions to be correct. Based on the town engineer's report, there might be some things that are inconsistent with the original approval, which does happen. How it happened, I'm not privy to give an opinion one way or the other, but the existing conditions should be correct. Whatever they're proposing to do with what they have, that's fine, but we need to know what the differences are with what they want to do versus what is on the ground to make sure that that is meeting your regulations.
Okay, thank you. So just to recap what Ms. Roudin said, we asked the town's engineer to review the drawings that were approved back in, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, 2015, but up the 7th of May in 2015.
That was the original.
With what is out there today compared to what is on the drawing set that was submitted to the planning board approximately four weeks ago. And in his opinion, there are various items that are either not existent in the field or differ from the approved plan. And just to relay this to the public, generally, the parking lot is not consistent between what was approved and the amended site plan. There's no guardrail, which was discussed a few times. Stormwater ponds D and G are different than what was approved. The parking lot driveway on the north end of the building was constructed and extends an estimated 75 feet beyond the building. On the approved plan, no parking lot or driveway was shown except an emergency route. Stormwater ponds J and I at the northern end of the building have not been constructed and are not shown or shown as deviating of the amended plan that's in front of the board. There's cars and trucks parked against and in front of the building. These were not on the amended or the approved site plan, so the parking has changed. ADA spaces and striping or other suitable handicap stalls are missing. Parking lot lighting is partially complete. So in the town engineer's opinion, the amended site plan does not accurately reflect the existing conditions or what was approved previously. So their recommendation is that the existing condition plan is updated to accurately reflect what's out there, and the application is amended to capture those deviations so that the planning board has an opinion to either approve the changes or repine on the changes, either way. Once that information is provided to the board, then we can potentially make a decision, so. In his recommendation.
Mr. Chair, may I offer some information?
Absolutely, Barbara. Thank you.
Okay. On the, on the plan where it says that there's a transformer on a concrete base, there's also a second one, which is not listed on this plan. And at the south end, at the back of the building, there is a, one of those temporary office trailers that has been pulled. It's, it's, it's blocking. You couldn't get, you couldn't get behind the building if you wanted to because it's going the same direction that the buildings are. And it's, it's at the end of the row of parking that's alongside of the south end of the building. It's right at the end, and it blocks everything. I mean, you might be able to walk fast there, but you couldn't get any kind of vehicle back there. That's not on the plan either.
I would.
And the plan does not show the, where the propane, where the buried propane tanks are.
I would agree with you. I took a hard look at some of the very recent aerial photos that I have access to. There's missing ballards. I noted the electrical transformer. The parking stalls deviate from what is approved compared to what's out there. None of the striping is out there. Stormwater basins are missing. There was quite a few items that, that I know are missing. It's hard for me to accept this as complete, knowing that the, what's in front of us is, it just, it's not correct. It doesn't accurately reflect what's out there today.
Right. I did, I did also want to tell you that where the driveway comes in, the first place where the driveway turns around to the left where it says private access driveway, you know, that goes around there, that's right almost at the edge of the slope. And then there's boulders there. That was supposed to be cut back at an angle so that there was more room for snow storage instead of pushing it down the hill into the wetlands. They have paved that hole. They squared that off instead of having it an angle because on the original plan, those two parking areas down there, one was straight, and the other one came at an angle. So I don't know if it's conceivable that we could have the applicant remove part of that driveway since he's now making it so that you, you know, there's no place for snow storage, and that's going to end up being pushed down into the wetlands.
Does anybody else on the board, or sorry, Ms. Brian?
Yeah, but anybody else with questions?
This is Annie. I'd like to have the board address Mr. Fitzpatrick's letter that he signed about the plantings that were on the original plan and how those haven't happened, and about our letter to the applicant stating that they had to be done as of six months ago or the original permit was null and void. I'd like us to address that. Can Ms. Roudin speak to that, or? Sure. I mean, so my understanding is the trees on the berm have been planted at this point?
There's some trees that have been planted on the northern side of the site, is my understanding. I do not believe it's the quantity that was discussed or approved.
And was this supposed to be a certain height of those trees?
One's.
There were supposed to be 112 trees planted. They have planted 14 trees, and they are not the type, I think, that's on the list at all.
So if they are not, if they have not complied with their approval, they are out of compliance with their approval. That is a code enforcement action. The only ability the planning board has, and I'm going to put aside the application you have before them, or before you right now, is to revoke the site plan approval. That would be an unusual move for landscaping, to be honest. That is the only authority under that that you have. The other is code enforcement. The corrective code enforcement action would be for them to come before you. One of the actions would be to come and get an amended site plan. They are here with an amended site plan, so this is an opportunity to correct it with the process that has already begun. So if they haven't planted the full extent of the trees, that can absolutely, on any potential approval you may give to this application, it's before you, reiterate that condition.
Now, since I think we're all in agreement, there is unapproved items that are out there. If we deny the approval, then it flips back to code enforcement.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm just saying that one of the corrections of a code enforcement action like this would be to seek an amended site plan approval through the planning board.
Okay, so let's just say this with the ponds. There's supposed to be four.
Yep.
There's two. So we could say we're never going to approve it while there's still just two ponds.
Correct. Then the only way to remedy the lack of the two, the additional two ponds would be for a code enforcement action to take place.
Right. And that was just one thing I picked out.
Yes.
I'm not just focusing on that. I'm just, just one thing. So.
So that doesn't, this is Annie, that doesn't seem consistent with the letter that Mr. Fitzpatrick refers to that was sent from the planning board, saying that it would be revoked. I, I'm a little confused about the process. You're saying it's a code enforcement thing? Please discuss this letter that was sent. I apologize, Annie. I actually don't have the letter in front of me. I've seen it, but I don't have the exact letter in front of me.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Hold on one second, Tom, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Jim, do you have the, by chance, the entire, and I'm guessing Mr. Fitzpatrick has the entire letter of?
It was in everybody's board packet.
Oh.
How's that sit? Right there in your hand.
Yep.
No, 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 no. The letter that Mr. Fitzpatrick has, same.
Our, the, the board's letter dated March 14, 2022.
Oh, the abut, the abut letter that he received was just the standard abut notice.
No, no, the letter that was, that is referred to in Mr. Fitzpatrick's, that came from the planning board.
Do I have to open this up publicly to allow him to speak? Sorry. For Mr. Fitzpatrick to clarify?
Well, to actually open the public hearing, you have to take jurisdiction, so no, you don't have to let, don't have to open it.
Okay, can you?
For him to speak.
Please.
Jamie Fitzpatrick, 15 Walnut Farm Road. So a letter was sent out by the board, and I apologize when I sent my notice to the board. I had 22 dates rather than 21 dates for September. But the letter was sent out on September 16, 2021. And in that letter was the notice of decision. And in the notice of decision, the last part, it listed the things that must be done in order to get the special use approval. So this letter, and I do have a copy of it here, this letter listed all the things that had to be done. One of them included landscaping, which is the one I'm particularly interested in. At the end of that letter, it says, "Per Newton Planning Board Policies and Procedures Manual, Section 6B, Conditional Approval, the applicant shall have six months to comply with the conditions and have the plans signed by the board. Accordingly, the conditions prescient shall be met. My laws and recordable condominium instruments shall be submitted for endorsement and recording by the board on or before March 14, 2022. If conditions are not met by this date, or an extension has not been requested in writing by the applicant and granted in writing by the board prior to this date, the conditional approval shall lapse without further notice."
Thank you.
Now I can answer this. So that approval, because they didn't get the trees in, that approval lapsed. It, it's as if you didn't approve it. The original site plan for the construction of this building, however, did not lapse. That got recorded. That's the stormwater. That's the.
The 112 plantings.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's the detention basins. It's the entire construction of that building. There were additional conditions put on the subsequent amended site plan for what Mr. Fitzpatrick was just reading the approval for.
I, thank you.
What he is reading is the cover letter and the notice of decision on the condominium conversion.
So this is the second time this site plan's been amended?
No.
There has been subsequent applications that apply to this site.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure. So they built it, they got approval to build it. Then they came in front of us for the condominium was virtually lines on plans to break it out into, I believe, if I recall, three different units.
Sure, one building, three units.
And then that was approved, but I believe Mr. Fitzpatrick's question is what happens to that approval?
Exactly. What he's reading is the notice of decision and the cover letter that went out with the condominium conversion approval. Condominium conversion approval is not a site plan approval.
And then this amended site plan, based on the applicant's letter from the attorney, was to document that the revised plan differs from the recording plan in the following regards. The correct building configuration on unit five is shown on the revised plans. A new easement note has been added. The driveway access has been relabeled as private access and 24-foot wide access, commonly referred to, formerly labeled as a common area, and a common boundary line, and the square footage has been updated. So that's what this application is for. So we have the previous amended site plan for the condominium, or the creation of the condominiums, I'll call it for our conversation. Is that? Lapsed now.
Yes.
Okay.
What does that mean?
That means that they, that decision, it's as if it never was made because the conditions haven't been met.
So all, he can't rent them out as three condominiums?
He can't sell them.
He can sell them.
He can rent them. He cannot sell them until such time as the condominium has been finalized.
And that's not even this building?
No, that is this building.
This building, the one that Turner Motorsports wants to buy, is three buildings?
It is three units.
Okay, that's what I, thank you.
So as part of this application, I believe it's from the applicant, Turner Motorsports is trying to close on the purchase of Nine Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire, and the bank's closing attorney has found some minor issues that requested to be corrected. This was some of them. I'm not sure if they're, that's why this application came in front of the board. So they were reviewing the previous and prior approvals. They noticed in some, in their opinion, some deficiencies, so they came to the planning board to close those out. So that issue that was just identified is.
On top of this. It's another one.
Outside of.
It is outside of this, to be honest.
Yes, but they still need to come back for that one now.
If it's just transfer of the whole building ownership.
Then they would.
Then they don't necessarily have to. They can still rent out the units.
Sure.
Because they've gotten approvals for those uses.
Yep.
It's just how it would be legally subdivided into property. That's the issue.
Their lender may not care, basically, or Turner Motorsports may not care, I guess.
So if we don't approve all this stuff, he can't sell that property if we add those back on as conditional?
No, he could still sell it.
He could still sell. He would just, he would be able to sell it as the whole property.
The whole and not separate.
Not individual units.
But I think what he means too also is if we do nothing, he's got two ponds. We'll go back to the ponds. We required he had four. Can he sell it that way? If somebody's willing to loan them the money or pay cash. I don't, I mean, I don't know.
I guess we'll take the sale out of it.
Sure.
And the previous condominium approval that has since lapsed. The only thing we're looking at right now is the applicant is in front of us to amend the site plan. The site plan that we have in front of us does not accurately reflect the conditions that are out there, document the deviations, and was not what was approved seven years ago.
Right.
So we, we would have to make a decision if this is complete.
Yes.
To take jurisdiction.
So because the site does not match what they have applied for, you have two different sets of information. sets of information, but they have only given you one set of information.
So as we're looking at it, what was stated is this is incomplete and we can't take jurisdiction?
I would recommend you not take jurisdiction, even though it is on paper, complete, you know that the existing conditions, based on your town engineer's site visit.
Right.
Are inconsistent with what has been proposed.
So the town engineer's recommendation is that the existing conditions be updated to reflect what's out there, and for us to just make it a decision if we approve it as is? If we do not approve it, it then goes into code enforcement?
It can go to code, the only corrective action is code enforcement.
Or the applicant amends what's out there to allow us to make a decision to approve it, potentially.
Yes. The easiest, I'm sorry, procedurally, the easiest path forward would be for the planning board to request of the applicant an accurate existing conditions sheet.
We have the applicant here.
Can we request that the applicant provides a complete application that documents the deviations from the approved plan?
You can ask them to provide a narrative of the deviations between the existing conditions and the approved plan from 2015?
May 7th, 2015.
And then what they have proposed can actually stay the same, if that's what they would like to propose.
Okay. And, Tom, sorry, I said a minute and it's been like 10.
Yeah, it's all right. It's been informative. So, the best way to handle this would be to continue it, for me to get the time to depict the existing conditions for you. Is that how you would like to see this move forward? Because obviously, we have some deficiencies. We will also provide you a letter of agreement between us, code enforcement, Jamie Fitzpatrick on the trees. There's the trees on the north side against his property, and the continuing properties on his street, those trees are all planted, as per agreement. We will provide emails and letters from Chanti, the previous bill inspector, code enforcement, to all that, to the board. As far as the two ponds and everything Mike McNally's talking about, I believe two of them were construction ponds, because we had a lot of issues there with runoff during construction. So I believe that's what it is, but I'm not 100% sure. Unfortunately, I'm in Canada right now, I don't have that set of plants in front of me. And so, I think maybe if I request a rehearing of this, and we'll bring everything you're asking for.
So, Tom, what do you think, a month?
Because I'm speaking behalf of our engineers now, and, you know, everybody's buried right now. Yeah, would you give me 30 days? And I will bring this back in.
The 25th is the, when the previous application was continued to, do you want to just do that the same night, or it'd be two weeks after that, so it'd be November's, I don't have the date in front of me, so.
Why don't we go to the same night, please, Dennis?
Okay. So, October 25th?
Yeah, October 26th, 25th.
I'll make a motion that we don't accept jurisdiction and that we continue this to the 25th of October.
This is Barbara, I'll second that.
Ever hold on, Jim, please.
One second. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Next is board business. I'm not sure if people want to take off. Or you're welcome to stay if you want to hang out with us.
Annie, you're on mute.
Do you need to close the meeting, the public hearing?
Because it wasn't opened, it doesn't need to be closed. Because the public hearing was not opened, it doesn't need to be closed.
Annie, the public hearing was, it was never opened to the public?
Got it, okay.
Thank you. So we have acceptance of the minutes from August 23rd, 2022.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Have a good night, everybody.
Roll, Jim, sorry.
Did you have a motion in second?
Mr. Piper, Mr. Guide.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Second is approval of the NEPA manifest, but I.
I have to, I forgot to bring you out your copy.
Oh.
The sign. It's $1,248.19.
So moved.
Second.
Did you send it to me, Bill Jim? You may have.
Yes, I did.
I thought I saw it.
Last night.
Last night?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And we have updated, Jim was nice enough to, and my guess is Barbara probably helped, I could be lying, but rules and procedures for our regulations.
That includes all of the changes from House Bill 1661, plus a couple of comments that people did email in, and a few grammatical changes.
So they're, I actually looked at them the other day and they're, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Who is the second? Mr. Piper.
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mrs. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And last thing tonight, we were discussing at various meetings, updating the fee schedule, specifically where there's generally a lot of work, legwork, to be done by the administrator and Ms. Roudin and the engineer if needed, so Jim pulled together a updated fee schedule.
The section at the bottom is the new pot, it has to do with the numbers of, number of butters. To be honest, the, the number could be a little bit higher, but I figure certain applicants are going to freak when they see that, those additions. It will cover roughly 60% of the cost of assembling all of the abutter items.
I think that we ought to have 100% of the cost covered by these.
I agree, I agree.
In order to.
Why are we agreeing the cost for that?
Give me a second, I'll pull it up.
I don't, I don't think the town should be underwriting the application fees.
I completely agree.
So we're suggesting that we put in T, to be determined according to abutters?
Yeah, why can't we just bill it back, once we, once the expenses are done?
Sounds good to me.
We'd like to collect it ahead of time.
Yeah, you can't bill it back specifically because Jim is a town employee. You can have your fees be enough to cover it, but you can't bill it back.
Right.
Like you do the town engineer or my fee, or any of the applications.
Until you go above 50, what you see there is reasonable. It's, sorry, once you go above 25, the 50 bucks covers the first 25, however, as you start to build it out further and further, it actually, because it is such a drain, that second number should be, every increment of 25 above 25 should actually be 100, but.
So let's, let's do that.
I figured people would actually freak if I.
How often do applications, how often do residential applications come in front of the board that have more than 25 butters?
Rarely.
Rarely.
So I think it's appropriate, because those are clearly large projects, and I think that the fee, it's a becoming a burden for the town, but it wouldn't be so much of a burden for the person who's requesting the application.
And an applicant can always ask for a waiver, correct, on a fee?
Yes.
I would say no waiver on that, because we still have to, we still have to pay $6 and something for each certified that goes out.
Right, but that comes out of the NEPA account. This is part of the application fee.
That's true, too.
So this would be paid directly to the town, and it's to offset the administrative fees.
And if the board so chooses, we can waive it.
So what do you suggest, $100, Jim, would be better?
$100 is actually the realistic number, I just wanted to give you someplace to start, so that people didn't look at it and kind of freak out.
Well, I think we should put it at $100, because like what we said, the normal residential person that's doing it is not going to have that many, so it's, this is going to be somebody.
With the exception of the large ones that.
Right.
There was one that actually hit 24, so that person would have had to have paid the extra $50. But if you're going to up that to, to $100, then you need to up the not to exceed number to 1,000, because.
We need a not to exceed number?
I just did a mailing of 130 abutter notices for tonight for the second one that we just had.
I don't think that should be our responsibility from a cost perspective, especially if this is a repetitive thing, that adds up.
I'm good with that, it's.
I also would like to distinguish that there was a comment that, you know, it's not residential, I don't feel that this is a discrimination thing about residential versus commercial or industrial or anything else, it's just, this is a cost of the town, it needs to be covered by the applicant, just without respect to what, where they're coming from, it's just, it's just an absolute cost.
It's, if it's impacting that many people, they should be incurring the cost to notify those people as to what's going on.
Yes.
From what I have been able to, what my data shows, is that it, basically, it concerns the size of the property. If you own a very large piece of property, and there was recently a barn that came in, they had 21 abutters, so they would have paid the extra $50. There was another barn a couple of years ago, over in the junction, that had 20, they would have paid the extra, but that is realistic in that it's taking that much more time to do theirs than, the gentleman that was first on the agenda tonight, there were three notices that went out. So, you know, it's, it's a fairness ratio. Everybody gets, sort of gets the first 10 for free, then you pay 50 bucks for the next 15, and then you pay 100 bucks for every 25 thereafter.
I'm fine with that, but, but I would remove the, the limit.
Okay. With a $1,000 limit?
Take it right off.
Just take the limit out.
No limit.
No limit, okay.
No limit.
And I apologize, I chose a PDF copy, not the word copy, so I can't change it right on the screen.
I'd like to move to approve the fee schedule as amended for the $100 with the increment of 25 or more, and remove the additional fee limit.
I second.
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I think we are all set, so.
I have one quick thing.
I have one thing, if I could.
Don't forget it, it's too late.
Mr. Lavoy and I have worked on a letter to the Board of Selectmen as discussed last time. Can we put this on the agenda for our next meeting so that we can, and distribute it so that the planning board can plan to send it out to the Board of Selectmen? Please, this is regarding the CIP.
And apologies, I should have said this ahead of time. I have it, I have it ready here, but we can discuss it next time.
Did you reach out to the new town administrator, Mark?
I did not.
All right, reach out to him, and then he can, he'll talk about it, and we can get a date worked on it. I've already talked to him, forwarded him the information that we have already for the CIP, and he's supposed to be reaching out to the department heads and trying to get that, so we're all going to get on the same page for the, that missing information.
Annie, what do you think of that, rather than sending the letter? Are you okay with that process?
I am, I just think, you know, give the letter to him, because it kind of delineates what's missing.
Yeah, okay.
Give the letter to Mark, to then give to the heads.
Yeah.
Some may should let Mr. Lavoy know that the new town administrator and he share the same first name.
Ah.
Yeah, I said the town administrator, Mark.
Oh, I see, this is confusing now. Annie, maybe that letter just comes from you and me then, rather than from the board?
That's correct.
The planning board, okay. Okay, I'll revise it accordingly.
And Jen had one thing, she's talking about grants, I can.
I will be very short. So at the next meeting, since you guys have a little bit of time, it almost seems like it can be more of a work session, because the two cases tonight are later in October, I would like to talk to the whole board about the land use master plan chapter. All of the data has been drafted, there are some draft goals that the master plan committee only ever saw very brief versions of, but it would be a good opportunity for me to run through the chapter as it stands, and we can talk about those goals. I don't think it will be a long discussion, but just to keep everybody up to speed so that we can work on putting out a public input session or survey, and that can come in a couple of. So at the next meeting, since you guys have a little bit of time, it almost seems like it can be more of a work session, because the two cases tonight are later in October. I would like to talk to the whole board about the land use master plan chapter. All of the data has been drafted. There are some draft goals that the master plan committee only ever saw very brief versions of, but it would be a good opportunity for me to run through the chapter as it stands, and we can talk about those goals. I don't think it will be a long discussion, but just to keep everybody up to speed, so that we can work on putting out a public input session or survey, and that can come in a couple of forms, get that scheduled, so that we can work on getting you to potential adoption of that master plan chapter. And related to that, because this is your land use chapter, there are currently grants out through the state for doing housing master plan chapters. It is a very easy grant application. I think that Newton would be well set to take advantage of it. I can bring a potential draft scope for applying for those grants. There is no match, which is also a magical unicorn. And there is more than sufficient funding to be able to do housing master plan chapters. And then if you also wanted to be able to do an audit of your existing regulations about housing barriers, so you require, you know, so much acreage, you require minimal housing size, what are things that you could do to change your regulations to increase housing opportunities? Some of it's workforce housing. What are things that you may want to consider changing, or things you may not want to change? It's just an audit. It just gives you the high level of what potential changes you could maybe make to increase housing opportunity. That's sort of the quick dump of the grants that are available, but the master plan chapter for housing, you should absolutely go after. Every town in New Hampshire should, actually, so we can talk about that at the next meeting.
Can you add that to the agenda, Jim, please? Can you add that to the...
I look forward to that. Thank you for bringing that up.
No problem. And I can get all the information to you guys, so you can see it a couple of weeks ahead of time. I've given the presentation multiple times at this point.
Just so you know, there are no public hearings at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what Jen said, so it'll be like a workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
So Jen will have undivided attention.
Awesome.
I was going to ask you about all that, because I saw the email came out that those grants were coming out to be distributed at this point now.
Yep, so the grant is technically open right now, but you have until January 2023 to even apply for the first part of it. It's more than, it's a very easy application form. It's fairly straightforward, so let's work on getting you guys towards applying, so you can get some of the funding that is available.
Those are state grants?
It's actually COVID relief funds that the state received, and they chose to allocate it towards increasing, it's aimed at increasing housing opportunity. So, most people have taken that as increasing affordable housing, but it's just increasing housing in the state, because there is an overall lack. It's about 20,000 units that are the estimated lack of housing in the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, so it's all free money, Mark. We don't have to put any of our money in towards it.
I was just going to say, New Hampshire's giving us money?
Listen.
It's a unicorn, let's take advantage of it.
Mark, it's an election year, come on.
So I have two things, two. Would it be beneficial to us to have the code enforcement officer here?
Yes.
Just one night.
It is...
Not for something, like not here during what just occurred, but like here one night, so we can talk to him, because you know what? How do we, as a board, in good faith, approve the giant one, when the other one doesn't even look like it's supposed to look like? How do we do that? How are we supposed to move forward? That's my question to you. I don't even know if you have an answer, Jen, but like, how are we supposed to do this? You didn't do what you said you were going to do, and now you want to do this. How do we know that that's going to happen?
So I don't want to talk about any specific application, nor if you want a discussion with the code enforcement, I would encourage you not to have any specific application either, especially an ongoing one. But I have had in the past boards that have asked their building inspector slash code enforcement officer to come and just talk process, because everybody works a little bit different, in a way to better smooth that communication and understanding the different perspectives. So if he's willing, able, it can often be a very fruitful conversation.
I think we should.
We can always, at some point too, when we're having issues about what's going on, make up a list, and then I can present it to our code enforcement officer, and ask him, in his duties, to check into all of it. Because I've already done that in a few instances.
But I don't know if that's our role, is to bring something to the code enforcement officer?
Well, Annie, if we see it, and we know about it, then it's up to us to bring it to his attention if he doesn't know about it. It's called communication. If we don't all talk together, then the ship goes down. So it's about every board staying in communication with another board, so that everybody knows what's going on in town. If we just try to...
Excuse me, Bob, you interrupted me. If I could finish?
Annie, let me finish, please.
You interrupted me, Bob.
Let me finish, please. If each department just does what they want to do, and doesn't communicate with the other departments, nothing's going to get accomplished.
Okay, you done? So what I was saying is that I would like definition from Jen, where our role is as far as identifying something which should or is that our role as a citizen, or as someone who is maybe on the Board of Selectmen? I want to make sure that our lines that we're playing in our own play yard. So Jen, if you'd probably address that, that would help.
Sure, generally, as a planning board, if a planning board has a discussion at a meeting and requests the code enforcement officer to look into something, you certainly could put in a request to the board, or the code enforcement officer in that fashion as a board. Any other, you know, you're out driving around town and you see something, and you call the code enforcement officer, that ends up becoming technically a complaint. You are doing that as a citizen, not as a planning board member.
Thank you for that clarification.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to close the hearing at 8:58 on the 27th of September.
Second.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.